Wow, August the 16th. Half the month is gone and we're just moving right along. So with that, I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of God, and to the majesty of the Father, and to the majesty of this world.
Ms. LaChelle?
All councilors present, with Councilor Michael Stefano previously asking to be excused.
Thank you. We'll move on to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Ms. LaChelle? Ms. Heather?
Yes, I believe Counselor Hensley has one thing, but then also we do have a proclamation to add to the agenda. And then Counselor Hensley?
We will add that proclamation at the end of Consent Calendar A. Thank you. Counselor Hensley?
So I've had some extenuating circumstances this week, and so if you're okay with it, I'd like to move our executive sessions to next week. I discussed it with Heather, and so it just was one of those things I couldn't do it today, so.
Part of the discussion we had for the timing on that is your next regular scheduled meeting of September 6th is looking to be pretty meaty, and I know sometimes having those executive sessions at the end of a long night can make it even longer. And so if council's open to it, we can have the executive sessions next Wednesday at 6:30. So we'd have 30 minutes of the executive sessions, the regular meeting at 7:00, and then at 7:15, the work session for CIP.
Thank you, Heather. It sounds workable. Counselor Gregel?
If that's all the amendments to the agenda, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the agenda as amended, and also excuse -- is Mr. Stefano going to come in?
I'm not exactly sure. I don't think so, according to our city manager.
We'll go ahead and excuse him. That's my motion.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Daniel? I've got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. LaChelle?
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on. Gentlemen, we okay? We'll move on now to citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. At this point, I have two cards. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to fill out a card and address We will start out with, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, but I will just say, Marlena, would you place the podium, please? Name it, address optional, for the record, please. And you have a three-minute time limit.
Oh, thank you. My name is Marlena Antonucci. I just moved here from Florida three weeks ago. I live above the chiropractor office on Main Street. It's a fun active space. I am here representing the San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition today. Hi, everyone. I'm the new community engagement coordinator at the Rio Grande Farm Park, and I'm also an AmeriCorps volunteer. So I have saved the dates for everyone here for our fifth annual Harvest Soiree. So we're considering this a friend raiser, so it's going to be a $5 entry fee, and we're basically celebrating the bounty of our harvest this year. We're also bringing together local food, local music, local art, local drinks. It's going to be a lot of fun. There's going to be kids' activities. There are also going to be workshops that include fermentation or using essential oils. It's going to take place at the farm park. Have you guys all been there before? Yes, good, good. That's good to hear. So we'll be activating that Rio Grande corridor. And basically, this is going to be a microcosm of what it would look like if we tapped into the possibilities of this incredible local food system that exists in the valley and in Alamosa. And I am so proud to be here, particularly for that reason. My fridge is full of fruits and vegetables grown here in the valley, and that's something I could have never said in Florida, so it's very, very exciting. So I have some to hand to you guys.
Thank you, Marlena.
We'll also be providing farm tours. You'll get to know our farm incubator program, which is pretty awesome.
Very good. Can she pass those out? Please pass those out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marlena, welcome. The next card I have is Dan McCann. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, 18-9, Sunset Drive, Alamosa, Colorado. I already told Joe and Ty I will not be running for mayor. I also told Heather. I've been working on the outside of my house now for over 12 years, mostly seven days a week. Ever since I was a kid, I watched Wednesday and Friday Night Fights by Gillette with my father. My number-one sports interest has always been professional prize fighting, more important to me than NFL, NBA, major league, NHL, and every other thing you can think of. Prize fighting is back in a major way. It's on all types of networks all over the country. I need to be in Houston, El Paso, and Louisiana, which has a casino which puts together some really great fights. I just don't have time for small-town politics anymore, and this may also include me moving. Bye-bye.
Counselor Veale?
Take care now.
Yeah, I just want a quick comment from Mr. McCann. Before you leave, thank you for being here every week and caring.
Hey, it's been a pleasure. I always wanted to get involved in politics, and the fact I never won anything, it's okay. You take care.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. We will now move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have two items, the approval of the minutes of the August 2nd, 2017 minutes, and the receive the July 2017 monthly reports. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, if there's no comments, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Counselor Hensley?
I'll second.
I've got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. LaChelle?
The motion passed unanimously.
This evening, we have a proclamation by the National Center Week 2017, National Health Center Week. And I see Adam out in the audience. Would you like to come up and briefly tell us about this before I read this proclamation, Mr. Roberts?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. I was here a year ago. So yeah, this is National Health Center Week. It's celebrated all across the nation. I gave you guys a lot of facts last year, so I'll give you a few more this year. Health centers across the nation serve around 26 million people every year, and that equates to one in 12 people receive their care from a national health or a community health center like Valleywide Health Systems. That comes down to one in three people living in poverty receive care at a community health center. One in six are rural residents like here in the San Luis Valley, and one in 10 children in the U.S. receive their care at community health centers. And also 330,000 veterans received care at community health centers last year. Valleywide is proud to serve over 34,000 patients last year, and it equated to 134,000 visits. And right now, we're staffed with around 375 employees, so we're happy to serve the community here, also in the lower Arkansas Valley, in the upper Arkansas Valley, in the Fremont County areas. So it's good to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And so with that, I will go ahead and read this proclamation, and we'll all come down and present it to you.
Okay.
Okay? It's a fairly long proclamation, so bear with us. National Health Center Week 2017 proclamation, "Celebrating America's Health Centers, the Key to Healthier Communities." Whereas, for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on Americans' health care system. Whereas, as the country's largest primary care network, health centers now serve as the health care home for over 25 million Americans in over 10,000 delivery sites across the nation. One in every 13 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. And whereas, health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban populations, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities, nationwide, health centers serve one in every six residents of rural areas. And whereas, every day, health centers are developing new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their community. And whereas, health centers are locally controlled by patient-majority boards, ensuring that the patient of each health center are engaged in their own health care decision. And whereas, health centers are locally owned and operated, small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating billions of dollars in combined economic impact in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. And whereas, the health centers nationally employ nearly 190,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, and certified nurse midwives who work as part of multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. And whereas, the health care model continues to prove or to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geography, income, and insurance status, and in doing so, improves health care outcomes and reduces health care system costs. And whereas, health centers reduce overall costs of care by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of costlier health care settings like hospital emergency rooms. And whereas, health care centers are on the front lines of major health care crises that our country faces, including providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats like the Zika virus. And whereas, National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health care centers, their dedicated staff, board members, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. I've got a typo here. 50 years ago. During this Health Care Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their vital role in shaping the future of America's health care system. Therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of Alamosa, in conjunction with your city council, do hereby proclaim August 13th through the 19th, 2017, as National Health Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve. Counsel, you join me, please.
Well, can we, do we want to comment first?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Counselor Daniel?
I always have something to say.
Right ahead. You have the floor.
I always have something to say when it's about health care. First, I just wanted to say, Adam, thank you for the work that Valleywide does with our community. You and your team are fantastic, and they serve so many people, so thank you for that. I have also heard a rumor that we're getting ready to, you're getting ready to open the clinic out by the mental health center. Is that a true rumor?
That is true. We got official notice from HERSA, Bureau of Primary Care, gave us notice that we got the new clinic, it's going to be the Alamosa South Clinic, approved. The Change in Scope is what it's called, was approved, so we have to operationalize that clinic within 120 days, which puts us at worst case around November 29th is our latest date we're going to open that clinic. And so we'll be opening a fully integrated clinic with San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group, where it's going to be a different model of care, where every patient will see a behavioral health specialist and a primary care provider. And so our vision is to really treat all patients with whole-body care at that clinic. And so we're very excited to serve kind of the southern part of Alamosa, but all patients are welcome there.
And I just want to say, as a partner, and the community, Valleywide has done some really neat outreach and some great things, so thank you for the work that you're doing.
Yeah, today, we were actually La Puente, and we served over 160 people food, and then we screened for medical reasons. We had two providers there. We screened over 50 people, so it was really great.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, I would like to thank you and your team. You all are great community partners. I would like to thank you for serving the over 34,000 people in the San Luis Valley. You're making a huge difference in their lives. Also, you're a great employer, employing over 375 employees. That helps our community greatly, so that means a lot, not only to Alamosa, but also to the San Luis Valley. And finally, I would like to thank you for doing whatever you all can do to help with the opioid epidemic that we have in our community. So many people come up to me during the weeks to ask, what are we doing in our community to help in that area, and how can we continue to reach others? And you all are one of the resources, and I'm glad to be a community partner, glad that you all are a community partner with us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Adam, thank you so much for coming home.
Of course, yeah. Back home.
Anyway, counsel, will you join me, please? Thank you, counsel. These are some of the fun things that we get to do. And get out of our chair for a minute. Actually, it's really neat. We'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. We've got a couple of items this evening. Our city manager, Legal. We have a first reading on ordinance number 23-2017, and ordinance amending sections 21-227 and 21-229B, and 21-234, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa, to allow limited placement of political signs in public rights-of-way during the election season, as well as the Employee Fun Run Walk Match. Is this Ms. Heather?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
As staff was preparing for the council candidate orientation, one of the items that we would historically review with them is the placement of political signs. And similar to many communities, there's that simple prohibition of you can't put it in city right-of-way. And we would usually spend time trying to explain what city right-of-way is and how they can tell, and all of that kind of stuff. And as we were preparing for that, the city attorney, as he often does, was thinking outside the box and thought, you know, why do we care as much about this one? And so we processed that from a staff perspective, and we felt like maybe we could loosen this up a little bit and make that recommendation to council. From my perspective as a city manager, I feel like we would still need to prevent it from being in the right-of-way on the commercial districts, because a part of the point of having this is so you can retain a certain feel of your community when you have people passing through the community and those types of things. And so our compromise was on the residential areas where it feels like it's almost more of a continuation of the yard as it is, that maybe just for political signs. And if you read the ordinance, there's some even additional language in there that it would be 60 days preceding an election, they need to be removed seven days following it, there's some height restrictions, how they're placed in relation to the corner, and the size of them. So there are still some restrictions in there, but we wouldn't patrol as much in regards to if they're placed in right-of-way. But what you have before you is a compromise on the staff level of still maintaining that prohibition in the commercial areas, but on residentially zoned areas that we would allow for the political signs within these parameters. When we did the council candidate orientation, we did alert them to the fact that we would be making this recommendation to council, and clearly, following whatever council's vote is, we would make sure everyone's informed of that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Do we have any questions of staff? Counsel?
I do have a question, Heather, and maybe I didn't read it in here. And that was, do we still need the permission of the property owner to place the sign?
Well, that's not addressed in this ordinance, nor is it addressed in the earlier ordinance, but I would say yes, otherwise you're trespassing on the property of the property owner. And does that apply in the city right-of-way?
It may not be politically advisable to make the property owner mad, so I would recommend that you check with the property owner.
Well, just as a point of information, I think it needs to be clarified. Thank you very much, Heather. And Counselor? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So the 60 days, I was trying to find it, is that for all signs or just the ones in the right-of-way?
Just the ones in the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading and set for a public hearing, ordinance number 23-2017, and set for a public hearing on September 6th at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
Second? I've got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number 23-2017? Seeing none, start voting, please. Ms. LaChelle?
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Employee Fun Run, Fun Run Walk Match. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is a small amount, and it might seem strange bringing it to council, but I also know council really appreciates the opportunities that they may have to show appreciation for city staff and be able to maybe contribute something towards a community partner. And so what this situation is, is our Employee BBQ Committee and our Employee Wellness Committee joined forces and are having a fun walk run this Saturday. And as part of that, they are taking the $5 entry fee per person to make a donation, and they voted, and they want to make their donation to PALS. So they raised approximately $160. I think we may still have a few trickling in up until Saturday, but they are going to be donating that towards PALS. And this could be an opportunity that if council wanted to just match that as a sign of support, you could easily pull that from your public relation line item where you have a balance of $2,111. And so this is just to see if council would like to provide a match to those funds raised.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, but what is PALS?
I am probably not going to get this entirely correct, but I believe they work with the youth, and it's youth that are disadvantaged and those types of things. Christina, do you know more?
They're a program of La Puente, and so they work with, they're not necessarily homeless families, they could be families who are with adelante or have other interaction with Departments of Social Services, but they work with kids, I think usually under nine or 10. They have an age limit, and they do a lot of activities with them after school, during school, and educational activities.
I know they often bring them here to the library for some of our events.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Coleman?
Yeah, I've also volunteered and went on some trips with PALS, and they take the kids to a lot of unique places and expose them to a lot of different things, not only in Alamosa, but throughout the state of Colorado. And I think matching the funds with $160 out of that fund would go a long ways with that group.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we agree to match the funds, I'd like to challenge all of the other councilors, that if they're in town this weekend, to run with me during the 5K, and then that would add more, you know, money to the thing as well. But I will be running this weekend, and I really hope that you guys do, too.
We wouldn't expect anything less, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I might take you up on that offer, Ms. Daniel. If it, excuse me, if anything to help kids, I'm all for it, so then I move that we can, that we match the funds raised from the Employee Fun Run Walk.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second.
What comment, Mayor?
I'm sorry, Counselor, I've got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Gregel?
Yes, city manager, where does this money come from?
So city council in their budget has a line item that's called Public Relations, and it's a fund that is to give you guys a little bit of flexibility. And you currently have $2,111.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. I think Counselor Gregel's satisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Start voting, please. Ms. LaChelle?
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report this evening? Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the H-PAC meeting, Historical Preservation Meeting, last Wednesday. Their president, Ralph Simling, has resigned, and the interim president for now is Don Thompson. They're going to have elections for president and vice president once they have a full board. They are talking about, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, they want to go from a seven-member board to a five-member board, and they're talking about that, and they won't be able to approve that until they have a full board. And I believe Holly and her crew are starting to get the word out to fill that one empty seat that is there currently. And I just want to personally give a shout-out to Ralph, because if you recall, over the last year, they have been able to put three buildings on the list, the historical list, and Ralph did a lot of legwork for that, getting all the information and the data to get that done, so, for the record, thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually did want to, this is about my appointment to the rec board. In my new job that I have, I will be needing to be out of town every meeting that is currently scheduled. And so I just wanted to talk to staff about that and figure out what we're going to do. Liz is my alternate currently, and I didn't know if we could switch, and she'd be the lead and I'd be the alternate, but I will be out of town every second Tuesday.
It's completely council's prerogative. You know, I think if Counselor Hensley wants to discuss if she's available to become, to move up from the alternate, and then if you're not sure you could even serve as an alternate, maybe we should try to identify a different alternate.
Counselor Hensley?
Sorry, I can look it up later. Second Tuesday at what time?
But it's not every month.
It's every other month, I believe.
Is it every other month?
Yes.
If it's that, I could probably do that. If it's that, I, I could probably do that then.
Councillor Vehill?
Yeah, it's kind of along those lines. I want council to know that, um, the library board and the farm park group meet at the same time on the same day. So I've asked the farm park to move their meeting back a half hour so that I can go to the library board, then hit the farm park, just so you guys know what's going on.
Thank you councillor Vehill. Councillor Griegele?
Uh, going back to the rec board, if, uh, if the alternate or even if it is, you can't, let me know. I'll, I'll, I'll participate.
So I guess the question is Charlie's at least, if I'm interpreting this correctly, councillor Griegele's at least willing to be the alternate?
Yes.
Or if you would like to remain the alternate, are you willing councillor to maybe serve as the, the first?
It's up to her.
Okay.
So actually my schedule is okay as far as my class teaching, so I'll be okay.
Okay.
Uh, I just had to look real quick to make sure.
Okay.
And so, I, if you, I think it'd be awesome if you're the alternate, because I'm sure once in a while something may come up, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'll make the notation.
Thank you, councillor Daniel.
Thank you very much for that support, I appreciate it a lot, you guys, and I apologize.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Move on to staff announcements, Ms. Heather?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not sure if you noticed, but we had a new link on your agenda for the advisory board minutes. And so, we still want to encourage you guys to, to give the highlights from the meetings and, and report back, but for those that may want to read all the things that were discussed by the advisory boards or, um, from a public transparency perspective to make it easily accessible for the public, we just wanted to add that link. They will be a bit outdated in regards that we only want to bring those minutes that have been approved, so they are going to probably be at least a month behind because we want to bring the approved minutes to council. So, just be aware that that link has been added and I'd like to thank the department heads and, and Holly's group that worked to, to make that happen. Reminder that this Friday, we do have the employee barbecue and council's obviously invited as well. It's at 5:00. We've moved it back to Cole Park, so make sure you note that location. I know previously we were having it at the golf course, but it is at Cole Park. We also will have some volunteers helping out this year and, and so we're, we're pretty excited. And I know the employee team has been putting a lot of work into this. So, um, hopefully the weather will cooperate with us. We also have, as you guys just discussed, the employee fun walk and run on August 19th, Saturday, at Cole Park at 8:30 AM. And then next week, we will add the executive sessions to your calendar to begin at 6:30. And then you do have the special city council meeting at 7:00. We don't anticipate that to take very long. And so, the work session will begin at about 7:15 or whenever that's, that's complete.
What's the work session about?
It is the CIP. So that's the first opportunity for us to review with, with you, the, the CIP, and it is in the fire training room. And so some of the shifting of these times was the planning and zoning was having their regular meeting here and we needed to make sure that we had Pat available for both of them. So, um, he's a, a man in demand, so those are some items that are coming up immediately. And, um, I think that's all I have from a staff update.
Thank you. Um, is it possible to get an update on what's going on on First Street as well as, uh, what may be happening with, uh, Thomas and Market Street? Is, what's the schedule there? Do we have any idea at this point in time? Um, I know you're a busy man, Pat, and I've seen you just, I think, I, I think, you're not breaking the speed limit, are you? Getting from point A to point B?
No, sir.
I didn't think so.
Absolutely not. Um, First Street is, is, uh, plugging along. Excel has told us that they expect to be done and out of there in 10 days. Hopefully, hopefully they can, they can maintain that schedule and, and meet that schedule. We will be roto milling tomorrow, um, getting everything set. We've started pouring, we've started forming, uh, concrete on the north side of First Street, new curb and gutter, new sidewalks, things like that. Uh, the, the, uh, turn lane is formed, so you can, you can see that if you, if you wander that way. We did have a gas upset this afternoon that was, that was handled professionally by our fire department, by the contractors, by Excel, everything, everybody was on site, well, worked closely with the hospital in Valleywide and, and that was handled without issue. Thomas and Victoria, Thomas and Market, that is, will be, it, it, it will be adding that to the CIP this year. So it'll, it'll, it'll be at, I'm not sure where it's going to fall out yet, I haven't, I haven't run that through, but it will be on there somewhere when you see the CIP next week.
Thank you, Pat. Still, uh, once it was announced, a lot of people are anxious to see something change out there over in Market and, and Thomas. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Wow. Thank you, Pat. We'll move on now to council comment. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a comment. The, uh, Alamosa Guanas Club on August the 31st at 6:00 PM at the disc golf course, they're having a social and we would like to invite the community out there. Uh, we will be giving, uh, lessons on how to, uh, play disc golf and I too would like to challenge you all to come out to the disc golf course and, uh, play some disc golf. I, I think you would really enjoy it and I think you'll be able to look at, uh, how the park really helps out in the entire community. And Andy is, uh, has been a great help and he will be helping us with some of the disc as well, I believe, making sure that we have access for the people who are coming out that night to have some fun.
Councillor Vehill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To Mr. Coleman, I'm ready whenever you're ready.
Bring it on, buddy.
Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to formally announce, uh, my candidacy for at-large city council. Um, I've, to my knowledge, to, to the general public's knowledge, I, I don't believe there's anybody running against me yet. Uh, I think that speaks volumes to what I've been able to do the last four years. I hate to talk about myself, but I think this is the opportunity to do that. Um, uh, if you recall, four years ago, I was able to upset the former mayor and the incumbent at the time and I got more votes than anybody in the mayoral race and in the at-large, uh, race as well. So, uh, I feel, my, my, my catchphrase back then was new face, new leadership, and I feel like I've, um, I've hit that and I, I want to continue to do that. I'm still very young and new and I'm still open and I'm, I'm for anybody in the community to talk to, um, to move this town forward. And I look forward to doing that over the next four years and thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vehill. Councillor Griegele?
I had two questions. I know that we've been getting a lot of moisture and, uh, the weed problem, and I don't know to, to direct us to the chief or who do I direct the, there's a lot of areas in my area that the weeds are almost as tall as the houses. And I know that, uh, eventually when those dry up, there's going to be a lot of problems out there with, uh, fires and stuff. And I know that on West 8th, uh, there's a big area there that it is terrible and, and it's crazy. I, and, and I saw the, the railroad finally taking some kind of action and they're starting to cut a little bit of them, but that, you know, you come into our community and you see these trains out there and these weeds are almost as tall as the train cars, you know? And it's, it's, I don't know what, what we can do or, or if we need to visit with them and get this cleaned up. And I don't know, Heather, if that's the enforcement, uh, individual that handles that or who handles that.
So, so two answers to your question. Chief, if you want to come up here and, and you can address the part about what kind of conversations we've been having with the railroad?
Good.
About the weeds and, and kind of how we're pursuing that. The other part though is, um, we really rely on people to let us know, um, where the weeds are in other areas. And so I made a note on the West 8th, if there's other areas, just make sure to send them to us and, and we get our officers out there to, to start addressing it. And so, it's something that right now they are so busy that they're, they're probably not even able to drive around as much, but, um, we really do need people to make us aware of the locations so we can follow up on that. And Chief, if you want to address the railroad?
So first for the railroad councillor, um, we're constantly, almost on a daily basis, having conversations with the railroad. Um, if you've noticed on, uh, 7th Street, they have cut the weeds up against their fence. It's been slow progress. Uh, we have made a contact with the federal railroad system. We do have now a contact that is willing to assist us with the enforcement side of that. Because it's federal railroad, uh, we don't have a whole lot of teeth when it comes to enforcement with them. And we discovered this, I believe it was last year or two years ago, when we tried to do some enforcement actions. But we do now have a contact and, um, that contact is being very supportive and he said that he would, uh, help us get this enforced when it becomes a problem. And he even indicated if it becomes an issue next year, continue to contact me. So I think that's why we're seeing some action now, is because he's made that contact as well. The large area on West 8th that you're referring to, um, just to the west of the new hotel, uh, that is county property. We have no enforcement action that we can take on that property.
It, I believe it's to the east of the hotel there. It's almost in between that new motel that was built and the, uh, and the apartments?
That's going westbound.
Oh, okay.
If it's, if it's, if you're talking west of the hotel up to the apartments, that is a large area that has not been annexed and it is county property.
I, I, I guess I misunderstood the.
Yeah, it's in the county. Um, if I'm wrong, I think Pat and I have discussed this, there, there's small spaces to the east, but nothing that's large.
Well, that's maybe something that we, that I'll contact, uh, the county for their blight problems and stuff.
And, and as far as enforcement, uh, the city manager is correct. It, it's a challenge for two people to cover.
Sure.
Uh, 3,100, I believe, lots, uh, within the city, just two people. Our officers are out there looking as well, but our code enforcement officers, they, they issue about 80, uh, notices a day.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're out there, they're doing their job. It's hard for them to go face-to-face with that many people on a daily basis, but the continual problem areas they do make contact with face-to-face and usually that results in them being compliant. The challenge we also have is a lot of these vacant lots and, and residences, the owners are nowhere to be found, um, they've moved out of the city and when we send the notices to the addresses that they have on record, they get returned. Uh, that's where we came up from the abatement money that we put in our budget last year. Uh, we are using that. Uh, if you've noticed the lot at 12th and, uh, I believe it was East, um, was getting really bad and we had that cut, so that's part of our abatement program that we have there.
Well, I'm constantly getting calls, so telling me that it seems like you guys ain't doing nothing and now you've told them, so, and it's good to bring it out, communicate that we are doing this and writing these many tickets and so forth, so.
It's frustrating for, for us as well and like the city manager indicated that, you know, we do need the assistance of the community if they see areas that are just out of control.
Sure.
Um, we try to cover as much as we can every day. Uh, we do miss things though. So if they notify us, we will definitely take care of it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councillor Daniel?
Well, I have two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry councillor.
Did you want it?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my second question is, uh, an update on the all-purpose pavilion, where are we at there?
Pat, if you want to come back up on the multipurpose pavilion?
So the dirt work is complete, the pad is, the pad is built, uh, it's passed all the compaction requirements and, and the, the building has been, has been staked out. They have started digging the footer trenches and, and will be pouring the foundation next week. Uh, so it is, it is moving forward. We're still dealing with, um, a lot of submittals, dealing with, uh, just, just different issues associated with, with the design and, and how it's all gonna, how it's gonna roll together when it's finished. Um, but it is, it is coming along and we are still shooting for a January opening.
And then, Pat, did you want to also address the Parks Building too? Just a quick update on that?
Parks Building is, is still on schedule for, uh, about six weeks from now. So they will, they, I believe they're going to start sheet-rocking the inside this week. Um, you'll start to see, you've, if, if you've been looking at it, you're seeing some outside finishes, um, some of the, some of the metal on the top, uh, we'll, we'll, they'll start working on the stucco here pretty quick, um, and that's, that's coming right along as well.
Councillor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I don't have any questions for you, Pat, thank you for, for doing that. Um, I did want to say I appreciate the, uh, community resource officers and their follow-up. I do know when I've gotten concerns from, um, community members or that I've seen and reported, I know they get followed up on, so I appreciate that a lot. Um, the next thing is I also wanted to thank city staff. We have a memorial tournament that is happening this weekend for, in honor of Alicia Riggs, who was a police officer and was a member of our community for a really long time. And so that's happening this weekend and really excited about this, the city being able to help with that and us being able to raise funds, um, to put in her, uh, memorial account for her daughter. So I just want to say thank you for the time and energy that you guys have all put in that. It, it means a lot to her friends, so thank you.
Thank you. I've got, uh, two items and, and, uh, a question. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank our police department for, uh, the enforcement that they're doing on Main Street. Uh, I've had, uh, quite a few folks, uh, visit with me about the speed and, and making sure that speed is being enforced throughout the city, especially in our residential areas. And I know you've been doing quite a bit. I, I've been reading the, uh, police reports in the, in the Valley Courier and noticed that a lot of folks on Main Street are being held in check. Appreciate that, Chief. So important because we've got a lot of folks that are pedestrians and walking across those three lanes, uh, and sometimes it's, it's fairly dangerous, especially when you have cars going 25, 30 miles an hour and you've got pedestrians wanting to get across the street. I'd like to, uh, thank LaChelle, she's our city clerk this evening. Uh, obviously, uh, uh, somebody back there is, uh, is, is taking a break. But, uh, the other thing I wanted to ask, is there any possibility that we could have a historical photo compendium of the, uh, multipurpose pavilion? Is there any way we could take pictures of that as it's being worked on, erected, that kind of thing? Is that something that we could do just to kind of have a record of that? That would really be great, I, I think, as we go along.
Sure. That, yes, yes, sir, that's something we can do.
Thank you very much, Heather. And with that, uh, is there anyone else with a council comment? Seeing none, uh, I will, there is no need for executive sessions this evening. I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.